This study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous Peoples. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on our YouTube channel, youtube.com/isd535, following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for the meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/simply. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecal, a nonvoting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Bobo.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Worthing.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the agenda has been approved. Item 3.1 is a focus topic, World Language Strategy. This is in response to the Board requiring, asking the Superintendent to provide an update on how we're looking at our world language options. Welcome to our guests, Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, Board members. Also, thank you, everybody, for being here. Before I turn it over to Dr. Obamu, just a few points. Chair Nathan's right, this is something I know Board members are very interested in. I think it's also reflective of something that way back when the world was young and we designed our annual Board ABC calendar draft. When we designed the current approach we're using to meetings, one of the requests that Board members had at the time was, on certain issues, bring us in or bring us in before the strategy is fully developed when you've defined the issues, but you don't have the full strategy outlined. And that is very much what we are doing tonight. We know that there are some exciting opportunities and some issues that we need to address around world languages, but what you're going to hear tonight is the beginning of a strategy, as opposed to what you'll be hearing at other points during the year, which is quite a developed recommendation that we're asking you to vote on. That said, I think this discussion doesn't start as just a potential inquiry into possible change. We do, I believe you'll hear, need to move in new directions regarding our world language, regarding helping young people invest in and understand their home language, potentially moving into additional efforts with immersion. Not only is it powerful for kids in terms of cultural connections and cognitive development, it's an incredible developer of world perspective in young people. So two kind of points of departure for this discussion for me that I'll just sort of share at the outset. While to preserve our German and French and Latin offerings in the high schools, a couple years ago, we did quite quickly make a move to entirely online instruction, and that may be a good model for some kids. I strongly believe we need to increase our place-based offerings in world language so that we have students able to study in a classroom with a teacher who's there all the time, as opposed to a fully online structure. The second is that, this is actually the first time I've kind of said something that I think we're going to come back to multiple times as we get into our funding redesign in the second half. I strongly believe that Rochester Public Schools does not need and should not seek to offer the same programming in all schools. Our schools are extremely different from each other, and when we insist, and this is not just about world language at the high school, when we insist that elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools offer the same programming, we are neglecting the fact that our students in our schools are dramatically different from each other, as are our teachers. That is not to say that there shouldn't be a core and there shouldn't be equally high standards and equally strong programming, but turning to tonight's discussion, I do not believe it would be heresy if a school offered one language and it was not offered across town, as long as we're making world language available to all kids. That's a significant departure from some fairly longstanding history in Rochester Public Schools, and we'll be coming back to that a number of times. It's something I've thought about in several years here, that the insistence on common programming, it has negative consequences for the quality of that programming and frankly for the structure of our staffing models, as is the case, I believe, with fully online instruction in world language. So to be continued with that, but I wanted to be very transparent that this will be something that I'll be bringing back to our conversations as we move forward. And with that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Obamu for an update on this exciting work that's happening.
Thank you. Chair Nathan, Directors of the Board, Superintendent Pecal, it's a pleasure to be here today. And what we're going to share with you are things that we're very, very proud of, and also the opportunities we have to be even better in our offerings around what we refer to as Indigenous world languages, based on the most recent legislature that passed. And so I would like to pass the baton over to Natalia, Director Natalia Benjamin, to get us started. And she has a guest too, so maybe you guys take turns introducing yourself, if you don't mind. Oh.
All right. Good evening, Chair Nathan, Superintendent Pecal, Board members, and Cabinet members. Thank you for having us today. We have Mr. Davidson here from Gage Elementary, who is the principal there, Ms. Martinez, who teaches Spanish immersion at Gage, and Mr. Sodarsky, who teaches Spanish at Centry. And so we have some exciting work to share with all of you today. So our agenda for today involves sharing some of the prior work that has been done, and then where we are currently, and some of the future plans that we have through K-12 So last year, there was a student survey that was administered for the high school students, and I believe you've seen that before. We'll revisit some of those points. And then the language articulation cycle was starting during the school year 2022, and we would like to propose some plans this year to finish that out and some recommendations for that work. So some of the plans that we have to continue that articulation cycle is to have five meetings the rest of the school year that would include stakeholders, administrators, world language teachers, as well as students and community members, that would be able to discuss the registration trends for world languages, as well as the feedback that we have from students. And also, back to what Dr. Pecal was saying, are there different needs at different schools, and how do we meet those needs based on the information that we have? And so we're planning when those meetings would happen, and then we would send out those invitations to stakeholders so that they could join those, that planning group. One other thing that we're working on is increasing the number of students that take the bilinguacy exam so that they can earn college credit while they're in high school. This also allows them to earn electives at the high school level, and so that would help both with credit attainment at the high school, but also post-secondary options. Looking at expanding world languages opportunities and what that could look like, as well as celebrating and planning programming for heritage speakers. And these are some recommendations that stemmed from some of the prior work and that we're continuing to work on. So currently, we offer Spanish classes in person and online at the high school level. French, German, and Latin are offered online only, and there are drawbacks to teaching online. There are a lot of models to teaching languages, both synchronously and synchronously. We do it live in synchronous online version for our students. There are some drawbacks, as I said, because of space, what students have access to, which is not the same as if they were doing it in person or through other models. So one of our priorities is to grow the offering of languages in person, because we know that's what works best for all students. The online pieces can work for some students, but not necessarily for everybody. And we'll do that based on the surveys and other information that we have from our students. So these are the results of the survey that was given last year, and you can see the interest of the languages that the students are showing, with Spanish, Mandarin, Arabic, French, German, and Latin. And so you can see where our students land on their interests. So looking at what would it look like? Do we need to look at ending some current languages? Do we need to look at starting some new word languages? Where are we at? And so we would do that based on high interest of the students, but also considering other factors. We need to look at, do we have viable candidates to teach those courses? Do we have access to curriculum materials? What are the resources, not just people, but also in the community, to provide quality experience for our students, so that we can make that a sustainable practice over the years? Let's see. Other things to take into consideration is, does the registration and enrollment of students support FTE for that programming? And so if we don't have enough registration and students who are taking those courses, it's really hard to be able to fund those positions. Okay, so we want to highlight where we're at with high school word languages and Spanish immersion at both the K-8 and the high school level. And I think we'll start with the high school word languages. We met during back-to-school as a department. We were able to meet with all the teachers from all languages. So we discussed the prior work, what are updates, just so that all teachers knew what the surveys were, what are the plans, and all the conversations that we were having, because not everybody had that understanding. We discussed some of the desired outcomes for the classes. Are we all that are teaching beginners classes, having the same targets? How do we move to more advanced learners and those pieces? And then what are some of the current program needs for the teachers that are currently There are two pieces of legislature that have come. One is the American Indian Culture and Language classes required, and that is something that the state is asking of districts our size to implement. And so that's some, that's work that's parallel to what we're currently working on as well. And there is language revitalization grants that we would apply, and those are based on the types of courses that are offered. They're not out yet for application, but we plan to definitely apply for those grants to be able to support that work for Indigenous languages in Minnesota. And with that, I pass it on to Mr. Davidson to talk about Spanish K-5.
K-5 Spanish immersion. So I'm super excited, A, to be here and share this news with you guys, because I will say personally, I'm monolingual, and having the opportunity to work in a Spanish immersion program with colleagues like Griselda and Natalia has been very, very uplifting, I guess is the best way to say it. This is our 10th year, and going back, our first year being completely K-5 was five years ago. And since that time, we've over-doubled our size. This year, we have our highest enrollment that we've ever had, and it makes up about 39% of Gage now is Spanish immersion. So that's something to be proud of, because we've been able to add an extra section of kindergarten this year, so we actually have 55 students in kindergarten this year in immersion. We found staffing for it, very well-qualified staffing. We've been very lucky in the fact that we've had, amongst our classroom teachers, we have five native Spanish speakers, and we have five ESPs for which are native Spanish speakers as well. But the collaboration, the commitment, and the passion that's demonstrated by our staff in Spanish immersion is palpable. We just had one of our Spanish immersion team meetings last Thursday afternoon, and I got to share that information with them. To see their work, their desire, their passion, their care is, it's just pretty amazing. It's why we do what we do, and I get to see it every day. And the work behind the scenes over the 10 years to put the program where it is has been large. It's not like you just go and pick up a Spanish immersion curriculum and you just start it. And there's been a lot of translations, a lot of work behind the scenes on their part, and a commitment to continue to grow the program. And they're very defensive of the program, too, I would say. One of the greatest things I got to say to our colleagues this past Thursday was, 10 years ago, this program didn't exist, and from an equity standpoint, this really lent voice and opportunity and options for a lot of our families in this community that are now very connected. So I'm very proud about that. So I'll stop there, because some of you've heard me speak before board meetings, I can go on and on and on and when I stop, and I'll turn it over.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Initially with our program, I've been at Gage teaching Spanish immersion for seven years now. Initially, our program, we did a lot of translating on our own. Now we're turning more to state, us, and Haggerty in Spanish, so that's more of a, for the literacy portion of our program. The best practices that we use is GLAD, the CIO method, and culturally and linguistic responsive pedagogies. Students engage in the learning, the culturally portion of it. We have a very diverse cultures of Latin America, and we teach everything, not just isolated to one country of Latin America. We're currently working on a K through to, a second scope and sequence for literacy.
So a lot of the work that is doing in Spanish immersion has yielded great results so far. We want to be able to take a look in a little bit more depth at what is it that we have and what is it that we still need to provide for that program. And so we are starting this book study with all of the teachers at Gage, and Mr. Davidson's joining us, and it's this guiding principles for dual-language education, which sets a pretty high bar to language education. And so really taking a look at what are some of those suggestions, what are realistic implementations for us? And again, where are those strengths that we have in the programming, and what would be other needs or things that we would need to provide going forward? And so that's some of the work for this year. For the high school, this is the first year that ninth graders, so the first kindergartners that start at Spanish immersion are ninth graders this year. And so we were able to provide an opportunity for them to take a Spanish for/immersion class, so that they could continue growing their skills. And so one of the first conversations that we had as we met with the teachers that will, that would be teaching these classes is, what are the goals for these students? Where can we get them to? And considering that, if we're able to make a pathway for that Spanish for immersion and heritage speakers, is for when they exit our schools, can they go to the distinguished actful status? Would be a pretty high bar. They would be able to communicate like any native Spanish speaker in reading and writing, speaking and viewing. And so the question was, then if that's the goal, then how do we backwards plan so that we can get our students there? And so understanding that our students who are currently in middle school are coming somewhere in the intermediate to low-advanced level, and so how do we get our students there? And so that's the vision that we set out as we decided how to plan for the current course. I'll let Mr. Sodarsky share some of that work.
Like, I'm honestly coming in on this like around June, in the curriculum writing part of this. So it's a brand-new course, and my background is L2, so second language learners, not necessarily immersion nor heritage. I have experience with migrant students, which has been a joy. So those curriculum-writing opportunities were available, and really, there is no, there is no curriculum. You have to write it for your own site. You have to write it for your own district, for your own population. And even, and I appreciate what you said, Dr. Pecal, because each site perhaps has its own population that's a little bit different. I understand Mayo has like 30-some percent of the population is heritage versus immersion. So I would like to recognize there is a difference between the immersion student and the heritage students, and it's not that they can't be together, it's just that they have different things going on. Oh, there's a slide now. Both of them are a joy. Honestly, you guys, immersion, have done a great job. I mean, the students I have, very beautiful Spanish, just aesthetically wonderful to hear and listen to, and they have things to improve on and work on. So that's, that's great, right? We have work to do. The value-add for these kids, I think, is in a year or two years, to be able to take the SEALs test, do well, or an AP. So the design at Centry has been more towards an AP movement, so that topics, the themes would be family, identity, culture, and society. And they'll have to write and speak with support. They just can't say, oh yeah, family's an important thing. They actually have to give support based on mentor writing and reading and different texts, right? So we use Ana Maria Matute, the classic stuff from an AP view, as well as their identity. So I think we're trying to do almost everything for those students. And again, it's, they both have two different, sometimes different needs, so it's a little bit, it's like having two classes in one class, at any rate.
He tends to be very humble when he talks about his strength in the language. So he's as good as being a native speaker. I've never heard him boast about that, for somebody who lived about a decade in Mexico, teaching there. So humility is good, but I'd just like to put it out there that we have competent, fantastic people teaching it. And there was, in Mayo, Mayo went, they figured, you know what, we have the Spanish immersion class, we're going to offer that. We have about 60 native Spanish speakers who come in with a lot of strength, we're going to include them in the classes too. And so that's why Mayo has three sections going on for them. So we allow that level of flexibility, particularly with native speakers being allowed to be themselves and being immersed in the curriculum.
Excuse, one other point, I think you pointed out, that this is not a finished product. It's an ongoing product, and it's being built in the district. So there is going to be some needs and tweaking, right? So I'm into Toyota Production Systems, I like process, and we're, I'm sure we're going to go back and look at what the best process will be.
So thank you for the work you're doing.
De nada.
So looking at next steps, it's looking at evaluating the world language course offerings and planning for the future, like what is our data telling us when, when the group meets this year? Really listening at student feedback, and that's both for current offerings, but also, sorry, but also thinking about what is it that our students are asking as far as the experience they want in those classes? And looking at the expansion of Spanish immersion and heritage speakers pathways, like Mr. Sodarsky said, they both have a lot of similarities, but also they have different needs, and how do we bring them together to build on each other's skills? Another thing is developing a plan to implement the Indigenous Language and Cultures class that the state has put into the legislation, and developing also a plan for professional development for the teachers who are putting together the, or implementing those, those courses. And because Indigenous languages is something that the state is asking us to implement in one way, shape, or form for our district, exploring the possibility to rename the department to Indigenous and World Languages as part of that, some of those next steps. There are several professional opportunities, some, a lot of them locally, actually, here in Minnesota, and so we, we take that seriously. We know that it's important for teachers to be, to have that efficacy in their classroom, to have the professional development they need to support the curriculum writing, as well as the best practices in language instruction. And those are ever-evolving. There's, there's always new ways to, and better ways to do language, and so there's a lot of work that we can do in that area as well. So thank you for listening to us today. What questions do you have for us?
Yeah, I saw the Spanish immersion K-8 slide. Could you tell us what's happening in the middle school right now with Spanish immersion?
Yes. So at the middle school, we currently offer classes in social studies and Spanish language arts at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Seventh and eighth is currently combined, but as we're looking at the numbers that are coming up, each grade would have the opportunity to have those classes, as long as we have the enrollment and the staffing for that.
So what is its teacher certification? What is that involved? Do they need to be certified in both Spanish and social studies? So they have dual certification? How does that work?
So I will say this, Minnesota does not have a bilingual teaching certificate, and so it goes both ways. So same for, in elementary, they will have to have an elementary license, it's the main requirement, and then the Spanish really is not required, but we need it. Same at the middle school, they would have that Spanish endorsement. We currently look at who has the skills to do it, and can we work with the state to give us the correct licensure for those pieces? There isn't a licensure that meets immersion classes in Minnesota.
Right. I was thinking more like two separate licenses for that. So would you be more likely to go with somebody who has a license in the social studies, in the content area first, and then hope to get someone who speaks Spanish well to be teaching it, or do you do it the other way around?
I think you need to look at both, because you can't have someone with a social studies license who cannot speak the language.
Well, I said, you know, if that would be the major focus, which, which would be the major focus in terms of hiring a person?
I think we have to look at it holistically. I don't think I can say one or the other.
And is the same social studies content that the state requires? I'm just going to boast a little bit here. St. Paul had that whole textbook translated into Spanish and French in partnership with the Minnesota Historical Association, and they gave permission for St. Paul to sell those CDs out for just $500. So that was where the parts, the materials from. So is the same social studies content for sixth grade like an English-speaking student would get?
And I would say, we, we work with the teachers in Pelsby the same way we work to, to fill those positions, and so we look for the most capable person to teach it, and then we work with Pelsby to, to get that license. I know Pelsby has had great interest in providing support for teachers to get those appropriate licenses, and so I think part of this work is also looking at, how can we collaborate with Pelsby? In the past, they've had cohorts of people to go through the portfolio process so that they could meet those licensing requirements, but I would say that's work in progress at the state level.
Thank you.
Two quick questions. The first one is, can, the SEALO bilinguacy exam, can both heritage speakers and kids who learned a language in school, can they, both groups take the test?
Yes. So anyone that chooses to take it can take it. There's no prerequisites or requirements to decide who can and cannot take it.
And then they get college credit for that?
Depending on how they score, and so there's a, there's a tiered approach, and so if they, oh, now you're going to accuse me. I think the advanced low is the platinum, and then they can get the gold, and then the certificate for an intermediate high, I believe.
Okay, thank you. And then, sorry, that was kind of two questions already. The last one is, Spanish immersion in high school, at this point, is it that ninth graders can take Spanish for, or just go beyond that?
So right now, is anyone, so it's ninth through 12 graders, who opted to take the Spanish for immersion class? And it's based on whether they took the Spanish immersion sequence in Rochester or at another school, or students who speak the language and have opted to take it in?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, let's board members go, and then come back. Thanks. So could, could someone paint a picture for me of what online instruction for French, German, and Latin looks like in the high schools? I'm just trying to imagine how this works.
It's a really good question.
I can speak to Centry's site, and again, the sites are a little bit different. So we have a dedicated space, it was a former language lab, and it's been used by the online people because it's a beautiful space. And so the students come in, there's an ESP that kind of rides the herd, okay, does the...
Monitoring of the students.
Monitoring the students, okay, sorry. And so kids are online, and they're... Monitoring the students. Okay, sorry. And so kids are online and they're interacting with the, the teacher at a different site. And I don't know where all the sites are. I think there's one at JM, there's one up in the cities. There's, I think a Spanish teachers in the cities, I think.
Yeah, one of the teachers there is in the cities. But the, the online teacher logs in and the students log into a Google Meet. It's all done virtually. I think last year it was hybrid and that was not working very well. And so all of the interactions are done in real time. So if the teacher has a reading activity, like they could read and answer questions. If they need to do small group discussion, they can do breakout sessions and send them to those pieces. But the students are physically either at school, in that classroom that they, that's made available for them. I think students who are older, who choose to go home and do it from home, have that option as well. So they're logging in from wherever is they are physically to be able to receive the instruction from their online teacher.
And so will there be, in a given class, will there be students from multiple different high schools?
Correct. Yep.
Multiple different languages.
Sorry?
Multiple different languages. So like at Century, there's all Century students in that room, but they're taking different languages at the same time.
I think we're talking about two different things. So the, the kids that are logging in are logging in for one language. The students who are physically in the space are logging into their respective Google Meet. So in one space, you may have German, French, and Latin, but they're logging into their French Google Classroom or their Latin Google Classroom or their German. Yep, right.
Okay. And then, and within that virtual classroom, there might be students logged in from John Marshall, from Mayo, from Century. Okay. Wow, interesting. Okay. That's helpful.
Yeah.
I know that this is still in the planning stage, but can you talk a little bit about the timeline for the Indigenous language and culture classes?
Yes. So one, I, I have met with our Native American liaisons and we started planning for that course. The, the first iteration that we think is feasible is to propose a course that would be an Indigenous Studies course that would have what MDE requires. So the histories and the culture pieces and embedding some like day-to-day language that students can learn. So it wouldn't be a dedicated Indigenous language course because that would be really hard to figure out in the next six months to get ready for next year. In order to have a dedicated Indigenous language course, we have to consider the pieces that I talked about. So can we recruit teachers who are qualified in the language? Can we have access to building that curriculum and that material for them? And then what's the best way for students from all high schools that could access that? And so our conversation was to start with the language and culture class, class as a more holistic way and addressing the, the portions that MDE is asking us to address with the vision of looking at the viability of any other courses depending on the resources we can access.
Is the idea then to start that at the high schools next year?
Correct.
All three, all three schools?
Yes, depending on enrollment and teacher. Yeah.
Will that be at like a, do you envision that being a 1.0 FTE? Is that kind of how that works?
That I can't speak of because we don't have the, how many students would enroll and, and what that looked like. We're thinking it would be a one semester course, just like our ethnic studies courses right now.
Thank you.
Director Garcia.
I think maybe a little bit to piggyback off of Director McLaughlin's question. On your slides about possible criteria for ending current and starting new world languages, you mentioned that you would consider adding new languages that have high student interest. So I'm going back to the survey, would we consider adding things like Somali, Mong, Dakota onto the survey? And then also like, are we going to be resurveying people? And how are we going to put the things that they're asking us to do into practice?
Yes, so...
We will get back to you with that next question. Want to be mindful?
Well, I think, so I guess to your question about the Indigenous languages, like if we were to put some Indigenous languages within the survey, does that also count in the new world languages? Not just the Indigenous language and culture carve-out?
Yeah. So I think for Indigenous languages, because MDE is providing grant money specific for those languages, we may be able, if we get those grants, to fund and build that program without necessarily a big requirement of the FTE and enrollment. But that's a big, if we get the grant, if we have a lot of pieces. So for the language revitalization piece, right, that's an MDE ask of, of our schools. And then are they funding those pieces for us? For other languages, we don't have additional grant money that we can allocate, right? In an ideal world, we would have all of the resources to offer all the languages we could. But that's not possible. And so we have to look at what, what is viable when it comes to those languages with the resources that we have allocated for that.
I just, I guess in that question, in the way that the survey is asking, I mean, Spanish very clearly seems to be obviously something that people want. But I'm wondering if there are more culturally appropriate or specific languages to our, like to Rochester or the Rochester Public School District, that could be added to the survey that would make more sense for us, not necessarily, I mean, obviously, I think a lot of people consider like French, Spanish, and German as like, most schools will offer these things. And I think to distinguish us from other places, like why wouldn't we add things? You don't have to answer the question now, but like Mong or Somali or Dakota to that list because those are very rich in our culture now. And I think that people who, like speaking as a child who didn't have necessarily like the language upbringing that I would have liked because of immersion or, or cultural assimilation, that it would be helpful even to those students who are sort of sandwiched between those two cultures to be given an opportunity to learn their native language here in Rochester.
Thank you. Dr. Garcia, it's a very important point. This, just also, as I'm sure you recognize priority, this is a teeny sample. So this survey is not representative. I'm glad we did it, but it's really a snapshot. We definitely need to go back and not just quantitatively, but through dialogue, probe student interest. One of the things though, that's going to be really important is what students are interested in now is based only on what they know. So as you're saying, there may be some opportunities building on students' own cultural, either their own heritage or their interest levels. The other thing is, if we're going to be serious about this, we have to be willing to grow a language. Because kids may not know that I would be interested in X language. But then when I meet the teacher, when I see my friend doing it, when I begin to see that, oh, this is interesting, when you build interest. So it's kind of like starting a business. We're going to have to be able, willing to support any new languages for a period to build the student clientele. So we do definitely need to find additional ways to inquire about what students would be interested in. But even that, we would be mistaken to judge as the conclusive measure of the future because kids will be interested as they begin to meet like the amazing teachers we have and we kind of grow it. So we're going to be, we're going to have to be willing to invest in some new languages to grow it. I've heard about the period when Rochester did for a while have Chinese, and that's in the past. And I'm sure there were other issues. But if you're going to be serious about this, you've got to grow a program and be willing to fund it for a period as you actually go up through the grades and as you build curricula and stuff like that. So, and I agree completely, that's a good list. But let's make sure that we look at some of the languages that you are suggesting and get a sense of whether or not those would be as well.
Can I jump back in with a follow-up? Does that mean, has there been thought, put into some of that growth in curriculum then, starting at the elementary age?
It could. I love that idea. Everything comes back to money. Like, amen. It's just going to be a financial question for us to take a look at. But that would be, you know, exciting. Cutting the, what really was an investigatory Spanish class at the middle school last year was very painful for me because it was an initial chance to experience. Now, our middle school leadership did ultimately have a convincing argument to take that step, especially when we're cutting fourteen million dollars. But it wasn't a cut educationally for me. It was purely, you know, financial. And so it, there also, it, it wasn't articulating directly into the great work we have in some of our high school classes. But I think, I saw that as a step back from what you're asking about, not a step forward. So I would love to have world languages, probably the first step would be middle school before elementary. But of course, we know that's an amazing time for those little brains to be learning other language. So we'd love it.
I think the most, the question or the comments that I hear the most unprompted people in the community are about GAGE. Like, why is GAGE the only, right? Like, can we have that somewhere else? And can we do it, you know, can we do one at like Lincoln, but a different language? And they're not necess, and the majority of those people are monolingual that are asking for those things and want that for their child. And so I think that this is, if we definitely, you know, I would definitely want to grow the lang, not just one language, but multiple world languages for this.
Director Burrow.
Two questions. The ninth graders who perhaps have been along for the ride since the beginning, do you know those numbers in terms of how many started with the program at GAGE and are continuing? And I'm not asking for exact numbers, just you're filled for. And then related to the same group of students, how many of them were perhaps heritage and emergent? Just ballpark, I'm not asking for exact figures here.
Phew, okay. So I believe we had one half a section at middle school. So if anybody knows something different, you need to help me out. So that, that were moved into John Marshall, Century, and Mayo High School. I would say the large majority of the students who are taking the Spanish for immersion are heritage speakers right now. And you can speak more about your personal experience. But I know at Mayo, they have three sections and they're largely heritage speakers. In one section, there may be two, and another one, there may be five out of the whole makeup. But I'll let you speak to that.
So at Century, the, the immersion group is small. It's six. And of the heritage, the heritage are another six or seven or eight, depending how, how they show up. But the potential for heritage is huge. It's, I think it's the same idea of, they don't know what, they don't know yet. I've been meeting kids in the hall from Nicaragua. We have Nicaragua, Chile, Honduras, Guatemala, Mexico. We have quite, quite a mix. It's, it's fun. But they don't know what they don't know yet. And so they're like, no, like I already speak Spanish. I don't need this. They don't really know how fun it is.
And then kind of related, total number of students who are currently enrolled in world languages, again, approximately, I did, as I look at the student survey, can quickly total those up. But they aren't necessarily representative of the total amount of students who currently have any ID. Again, nothing exact.
Is that, John or Jack, I was going to pull up just how many kids are taking world languages?
So, okay, I'm going to have a question. In the process of thinking about whether it's retaining a current language or offering a new language, is there anything that you've come across, or maybe it's in the conferences or resources that you're accessing, that tells us when students make that decision to take that high school course? I mean, in Rochester, that's when it's offered. So they have to make a conscious decision. In our case in Rochester, we've been talking about how there's, we're giving our high school students so many options. And in many times, those options are now conflicting. So you have to take a double block course to go to CTEC or PTEC. You know, if you want to do band, you have to consider that there's other things that you won't be able to take. And world language has many times been one of those where it, it causes a conflict in student schedules and they have to make choices. So are we, in this whole process, are we rethinking or looking at, how do, how do we educate our parents and our students so that they have time to think about that before that ninth, you know, that, that Panther Night or the Spartan Night or the Rocket Night where they have to go in and make these big choices as to, which if they don't make the right choice freshman year, then it might limit what, what they're able to do. So do we know anything about that?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. As part of the District-wide Initiative for Systems Change on Post-Secondary Pathways, we are launching this year an effort to redesign the entire registration process. And so that will involve world language, but it will also involve all of those things. There's much we can do to improve the registration process. I think what you're raising involves that. When do you decide? How clear are the decisions? How much guidance are you given in the decisions? How much do you know about what's offered and what you like and what your career aspect needs? But the conflict piece that you reference is about also redesigning the high school's schedule. Because right now, we're not talking about that. We're talking about making it clear to choose from within the schedule. I will say periodically, as I think about the things that are not directly in the strategic plan, I sometimes think that is a task that's ahead of us, like a fundamental redesign of our high school schedules to really grapple with the fact of, are we offering the right number of subjects? Are we matched with student interest broadly? Are we matched with, you know, future career fields? So the hard answer to that question is, that is not right now on the to-do list. But I think every time I hear someone talk about those choices that kids are having to make between, you know, CTEC or world language or band or something like that, there's always going to be choices. But do we have the most coherent pathways that we can give kids? We all know how hard that will be because these are good people teaching good subjects. And we'll have to do some thinking about that right now. I could see that frankly, being a huge focus of a next strategic plan. I hate to kick things down the road. But the registration process revision is absolutely getting underway. And when you see at the board meeting next week, an overview of our new software platform, Zello, one of the many features that I'm really excited is course planning. Because it really helps kids begin, and parents or caregivers, begin to be more intentional in making decisions with something that is much more dynamic and user-friendly than our course registration guide right now. So yes to the choosing piece, not so much quite yes to the core offerings piece, but that could be down the road. In fact, the whole discussion around world language is a piece, is a piece of that.
So maybe a simpler task related just to languages. In fifth grade, we give our students options and there's community organizations that introduce our students to the instruments that are available that they might be able to play in middle school. I think about not having that Spanish elective in middle school where our students who are monolingual might not know, what, what is it to learn a second language? So that's, I, I think, all that. But in the near term, is there some way we can offer our students, if we want to grow, if we want to have more students taking language, can we think about having some sort of exposure to, this is, we have many students who already come here with exposure in multiple languages, but we have those who aren't. To expose them to the benefits of, of taking another language for students who may have not thought of it. Director Garcia?
Yeah, I think also in tandem with that, like I wonder, and I'm sure all of you experts have maybe your own reactions to this or know maybe where it comes from. I remember being in high school and like every year, the French and the German teachers were like wondering if they were going to have a job the following year because of enrollment. And so I feel like if we're still at, in that space, how, twenty years later, like how, how do we stabilize world languages, but also how do we compete with like a student who's like, you know what, I do want to be in band and choir and speech and debate. So I'm not going to take Spanish three and four. I'll just take one and two. Because I got Duolingo at home, I'll just maintain my like seven hundred day streak or whatever.
What do we?
What do we do as a, as a, as a district to keep it healthy and whole? Because it's so necessary, but we just don't, and we, I say the collective, we just don't seem to have a great handle on like, how do we stabilize that in a district and make it viable and as necessary as it very clearly is? But it always ends up being that like, the option... I'm going to opt out of because I want to do all of these other things because I can maybe just pick that up later. And I don't know if anybody has a reaction or response to that.
This is not in Rochester alone.
Oh.
Elment, if you may, it's all over high schools. And the state says two years is all you need. And so a lot of students will, after they've gotten their two years check to, that is acceptable for college entrance, they divert and they go into other areas. It's, the only thing we have control over is this. And I want to just say that when we look at the smart numbers, we have currently at the high school, maybe you can speak to it because it's your work. Our first, this group, this group that is in the high school was a class of how many students?
Oh, 10, 10 years ago, I wasn't at GAGE at that time to tell you what the enrollment was at that point. But I can tell you current numbers if you want those. So, because I opened and I shared, right now, we're 12% bigger than we were last year. Last year, we were 8%, or 5% bigger than the year before. The year before that, we were 3% bigger. So we've had a consistent growth rate, if you will. And I was charged or given the opportunity this past year, or our program was given the opportunities to add a third section if we had the numbers to do it. Once we were given that opportunity, we had a third section. We have 55 kids in kindergarten right now in our Spanish immersion. I think a really good important aspect of Spanish immersion at GAGE that I want everybody to just be really clear about, it's not a school within a school. We're very adamant about communicating that in our community. Because then it becomes, we have Spanish immersion and we have GAGE. GAGE and Spanish immersion is one place. We get to house the program, but they work collectively. All of our staff work as grade level teams. Our students do recess and lunch together. It's not a separate program within GAGE, it's part of GAGE. What we're really honored to have at GAGE is we're a very diverse community already. This just adds to the richness of what we have. And it's a powerful, powerful thing. But when we look at our numbers right now, I mean, adding that third section, we haven't had kindergartens this large before. But if you go down from fifth grade all the way down, the numbers have increased in size because what we're looking for is stability and sustainability down the road. And the more we can advertise and get that message out, I like to give this one piece of anecdotal evidence, is whenever I gave a tour the last couple of years, there was a father that actually worked at GAGE that had kids, one was in the initial cohort 10 years ago. And he said it so beautifully, and I will never forget this, giving my child the Spanish immersion opportunity is a gift that I can't give them personally. I can go play football with them, I can teach them to ride a bike, we can go and do this, that. I don't speak the language. This is a gift that I could give them. I can pay for piano lessons, but this is what I can give them. And it's a lifelong skill. So I'm really proud of what we do at GAGE. And our numbers, like I said, we're right at 39% of GAGE is Spanish immersion now, but it's a collective whole at GAGE. And we say neighborhood and Spanish immersion, but the teams all work together. But our numbers, they're increasing. And I think that's something down the road. The more we can be stable with that and sustain that, the stronger we're going to be.
I told him when I came in, I said, if you want a bigger program, you've got to build a solid base. Because this is what happens. And so I dared him, get one more additional class, we'll find the money. He did. I'm daring him to create. I said, that's three, three doesn't quite help because it still doesn't build capacity at the high school based on almost a decade of doing this work. If we are able to get four, five kindergarten classes going, then we build capacity at the high school. So we could come back and say, guess what, Sentry has 20 students taking it because it all starts from the base level. When you have one class over 10 years, you suffer attrition. And then when you have two classes, by the time it goes up, it narrows up to be one class. And then when you have three classes, it narrows up to be two classes. And that is, is the way I've seen it happen in my past life with St. Paul Public School. So I dared him, he said, watch me do it. And he did it. And then he found a teacher way out of, far away from-
Columbia Heights.
Columbia Heights. He stole from Columbia Heights.
Borrowed permanently. May I share one thing though, because I would be, I would regret this if I left this room and didn't share this. A, Chris Zelda and her team are amazing. We have Katie Miller, and those of you don't know Katie Miller, she's our Spanish immersion coach. I wouldn't be able to sit here and say a thing about Spanish immersion if it wasn't for Katie Miller, plus our team. So for me to sit here and just expand on Spanish immersion when I'm monolingual myself, and they've taught me rooms, how if I cross a threshold, I don't speak. If I need to speak, I have to ask the teacher to come out. I mean, they're very strict about it. But I think, I just want to honor Katie in this too, because her work with the team, and she's not able to be here because she's actually presenting about Spanish immersion with a civic group right now, so.
Can I just mention one thing, that what they experienced with the parents and through the Spanish immersion program, the parents have testified, or given testimonials of how they've taken vacations in different countries, Latin countries-
Yes.
And how their children have become the translators in those vacations. And it's just a beautiful feeling to know that these children are very fluent. We've had volunteers from high school come and work in our school as, to assist. And they're just shocked because they realize that some of these kids are speaking better Spanish than they have in high school. Very proud of the program. We've also been very active in the community. Community, we've had, added a cultural piece with the folklorico dancing. We've been invited to perform at Latino Fest, at Mariposa Fest. So these are our skills, these are very enriching part of their education that's just carrying on as the years go by.
I do want to answer your question though about interest and engagement, just briefly, because that's not work that happens in isolation. Multilingualism is not always viewed as an asset, and that is work that we keep doing. And so I do want to speak about what that can look like in all of our classrooms, because it's not the work of just world language classrooms. It's work that needs to happen in every classroom, because we have multilingual speakers in every one of our classrooms at Rochester Public Schools. And that is work that is complemented, right, by the work that our multilingual teachers are doing. And so as we're working on building those translinguaging skills and normalizing multilingualism in all settings in our schools, I do believe that all students can see the benefits and the asset of multilingualism. So that when they get that opportunity, they can be excited and they can see the value in it so that they can take those classes. And as the adults in those spaces, it is a responsibility to, to show that to our students, that it's a value and it's an asset. And then the opportunities are there for them to, to take those courses.
So thank you, vergo. Okay.
Go back around, it's just, go back to Dr. Marlin.
So I have a couple of questions on the student survey, and I was really glad what you mentioned. And I believe Mr. Sodarsky did a little bit of a follow-up, that students don't know what they don't know. Who was, to whom was the student survey administered? Was it like ninth graders? Were they kids who were already taking a language?
I believe, it was to all high school students. And so this survey was pushed through Skyward for all students who were in all three high schools to show their interest.
Okay. So it was basically self-selecting?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So as I have been reflecting here a little bit, and I keep thinking back to a conversation that we had as a, as a board, maybe eight months ago about deeper learning. And we were all reflecting on instances where we had experienced deeper learning or had some, some, some past educational experience that felt like deeper learning. And it didn't really hit me until afterwards, but it was absolutely my French class. And as I, I just keep kind of ruminating on that because I think that, you know, there's kind of a couple of different lenses. But for high school students, the incentive to learn a foreign language isn't because, at least in most cases, I wouldn't expect, because they're really just interested in how to conjugate verbs and how that works in different languages and really, you know, mastering all the irregular forms of this, that, or the other. It's because it's a gateway to access that culture. And that's the payoff that students would be interested in. And I, and that's, that's how it was for me when I was in high school and I, not really part of school, but had an opportunity to travel to France and, and, you know, and got really into the castles of the Loire Valley and like did this big research project. And it was because there was a specific teacher that that was her passion. I never would have had that interest. None of the students at my school would have but for that one teacher that shared that passion with, with the students kind of in her orbit. So as usual, that's kind of my roundabout way of getting at some sort of a point. What are we doing to help students to access the culture that is opened up to them through mastery of a foreign language? Do we, do we have, in the immersion context, it seems clear to me. And that, it's like built in because you, as an immersion student, you get to have conversations with heritage students and you have all of those opportunities, Chris Zelda, that you just talked about at Latino Fest and so forth. But I don't know, are there examples at the high school level in particular where we're helping students to access that culture?
Do you want to speak to that?
Well, I think in a roundabout way, I understood you to say something like-
That's as good as you get with means.
No, like it really didn't, it's teacher dependent, right, on one level. It's systematically, each high school does support a trip abroad. They're not part of the school, but it's an independent thing. For example, this summer, we took 22 kids to Costa Rica for 10 days. I think they'll remember that trip forever. Well, I will, for sure. But, and then Spain was the year before. And those were 33 students. And they will definitely remember that trip. And I will too. So those activities, like endpoint, but those are really high-end. And I don't know that that's equity, right? Because that's a $5,000 or $4,000 or $2,000 entry-level fee. So what is there, besides the individual things, there's Latino Fest and kids are encouraged to tap our own society, our own community with all the different things that are available. And that's again, teacher-driven or department or PLC-driven, right? There's world language fest at each high school, and it's usually in the springtime. Just have goofy games and things, there's just certain activities. But I don't think there's a great systematic approach. I don't, I don't know that that's the curriculum, maybe.
And I, and I think that's, that's it for your question. And I think that's definitely something that the articulation cycle can, can take a look at. I do believe in the work that Dr. Goldie Muhammad does. And she always speaks about, we work with skills and we work with intellect and we work with criticality. Conjugating a verb is only as good as you can put it in practice. And it's for a communication, right? It's for a purpose. And so doing grammar in isolation really doesn't get you to the proficiency and the deeper level that could be in those classes. And so as we're looking at our program and our curriculum is, how are we providing opportunities for the skills to be built, but also for the intellect and the criticality that those skills can be applied for? And it's the same conversations that we have with our students who receive EL services. We don't just focus on skills and conjugation because that only takes them so far. We need to be, to make sure that they're engaging in higher order thinking skills so that they can use those skills for a purpose. So it's definitely something that can be done. It's something I think we need to explore to what degree we do it or don't.
I think one of the, as we have this conversation, one of the things I've seen evolve over the years is we are clearly talking about, and I'm not sure our community is aware of this. I mean, I think when people used to think about world languages, they thought, what are you offering in high school? And can my kid take the, the language class if they want? And I think as we consider, as you consider the options going forward, I think it might be interesting to know of students who are taking language K-12, how many are in each of these kind of groups that we're now addressing? Because the indigenous and world language approach in our district is clearly far more than what high school classes are in the course catalog. And I think that might be helpful for our community to understand that, that we're not just talking about, can a student have French in high school? But how are we meeting those heritage language speakers' needs? And how are we taking that Spanish immersion to K-12? And how are we meeting the needs of those students who are maybe just taking that course for two years? But if we're going to have a comprehensive high school, that's one of the offerings that, you know, our district probably has to have. I think that might be, I mean, I don't have a sense of how many students we're talking about, like in each one of those sectors to have. Because we might, the biggest number of students that we have to serve might someday be immersion students, even more than the number of students we need to meet their needs to have a two-year sequence of courses to go to college. But it would be nice to see where we are now. Dr. Marlin.
This isn't specifically a world language question, it's more about culture, I think. But it's been my experience with my kids and now with their kids, that very often when they're in school, there will be students who come from some other place, who speak a language other than English, who are incorporated and invited by their teachers to share, to share the food they have, to share some customs, to have their parents come and, and show their crafts. And I know that that's not, I don't think it's necessarily part of the curriculum, but there have been amazing experiences all the way through high school where kids do this. And I don't know as we go forward, if there's going to be increased emphasis on maybe not formalizing that in the curriculum, but making sure that, that the students can become the teachers too and can share their background and their culture. And that really enriches everyone. And I think does, for some kids, open the doors to some other languages and some other cultures that are there.
Yeah. And I think as, as we've focused on belonging and building that for all our students, that's part of the identity work that I think many of our teachers are engaging in. It's a lot of the back-to-school presentations that we have had with our staff. There's lots of wonderful examples that I've been able to witness. And so I'm excited for teachers to incorporate that identity work because it speaks to everybody's heritage, not just those that come from countries or other languages. But all of the assets that all our students can have, that's one part of it. I think the second part of it that I think of is the mutual learning, right? It's not just for the students to learn from the teachers, but also for the teachers to learn with and from the students. And when we engage in that collaboration with the students, it really opens the gate for deeper learning and for more, I think, reflective experiences for everybody. So I think it's definitely part of the work that we're trying, and a lot of the conversations that we're having in the office of academics.
Can I just mention one thing on the elementary level with GAGE? We do have, like Chris said, we don't have, it's not a Spanish immersion inside of a different, regular school. What we do is we work together, we plan together. In some of the discovery options that we do have, we invite all students. So if I'm doing a Hispanic heritage craft, there are all, all second graders are invited, whoever wants to sign up. So they're getting a taste of that culture, even though they're not in Spanish immersion. A lot of these children are also learning the language through other peers. They're learning how to say hola during the hallways, adios, como estas, and different phrases. So they're getting a little bit of language too. And it's like integrating. So that's a beautiful part of, of working together.
Dr. Marlin.
So this is, you won't be surprised, fellow board members, this is getting a little bit into the weeds. But with the, with the cultural pieces, I think it's really important to, you know, how do we integrate some of this throughout our regular curricularly required courses? And I'll give you an example back from when I was in high school, a thousand years ago. And I hate it when people say, well, when I was in high school, because usually it doesn't apply. But in my 10th grade English class, we had just been studying some Russian literature. And then our teacher, then we had like two or three days of Russian days in a row where we sampled the food, we heard music, we learned something about their culture in terms of, you know, what kind of dancing they did, even pieces of history. And I think that's probably unusual for something like that, certainly back then, to happen. But I'd really like to see some emphasis on that, where we can actually do some real integration of these kinds of experiences. And just what you mentioned about second graders who can, you know, they can come and experience this. They don't have to be in Spanish immersion. And I realize this is getting way far away from world languages. But I'll blame, I'll blame Dr. Marvin for bringing it up.
Any other comments or questions for the superintendent?
Yeah, I am hesitant- Yeah, I am hesitant to do this because it's not the note that I would necessarily choose to end on. But I think if I don't say it, it's disingenuous three, four, or five months from now. And you may say, why did we have this great discussion of immersion in particular, and you didn't say it? Our immersion programming must also fit within the transportation redesign that the board has asked me to bring by December 1. It is impossible to have that continuum carved out from the larger picture that we face with a 30% cost increase that I'll be asking you to approve next month. And I say that, I've been sitting here thinking, do you articulate that? Because this is so exciting. I don't know at this point that there's a direct implications for what that will be. But I think to not say that could have you several months from now, sitting here saying, wait a minute, why did we have a discussion of growing immersion? And nobody mentioned the fact that we, it is impossible to implement our new start times without significant change in our transportation structure. It's impossible. There's no nuance or gray area. And so, you've charged me with those options. We're working very hard on them. We'll be bringing them forward. I don't know exactly what that, but I don't want to, three months from now, people say, why didn't you mention that when we were talking about that? This is wonderful programming, and as I think Natalia in particular said, absent constrained resources, we'd want to grow it, grow it, grow it. We still want to nurture it and grow it. And yet, I feel a need to make sure that I add that point because that's going through my head as I'm listening to these exciting options. And that need to be thinking about that larger footprint of where we can afford to, not just afford, where we can afford and where we can logistically get in new start times, students to and from our schools. So, to be continued on that. In the meantime, thank you for really just amazing work. We've talked a lot about the immersion, the indigenous, the heritage language speaking, all very exciting. And I also want to say, we I think have begun a really important conversation about the world language offerings at the high school level that are another critical piece of this, and where we do need to go and broaden the lens through which we're having that discussion in terms of, you know, area, interest areas and things. And we will, I'll work with the chair and vice-chair to put an update on that progress onto the calendar sometime, when I hear from FA and Natalia, that we've got some proposals to report back on. So, thank you again so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is 4.1, our ABCD updated. Are there any items a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on a future school board meeting agenda? Hearing none, under other business. There were no questions and answers submitted before the, there were no questions submitted before the meeting. And item 5.2, upcoming board meeting dates. We have made some changes to some upcoming board meeting dates, and those are reflected in Simbli, but I will read them. We have a special session for field trip fees on October 17th at 5:30. And immediately following that special session, we will have a regular meeting. On November 14th at 5:30, we have a regular meeting. On November 21st at 5 o'clock, we have a study session. On November 28th at 5 o'clock, we have a special session, which is a public hearing on our World's Best Workforce Plan. Immediately following that special session, we have a regular meeting. On December 5th at 5:00 PM, we have a study session. And then immediately following that study session, we have a special session to discuss the superintendent evaluation student outcomes component. And then on December 12th at 6:00 PM, we have our annual truth in taxation hearing about the approval of school district property taxes payable in 2024, which will be immediately followed by a regular meeting, and that will be our last meeting of the year. So, hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:14 PM.